The July 6, 2021 Planning Board Meeting. I want to welcome everyone in the peanut gallery, those on Wind Cam and those joining us with Zoom. And I believe technically we actually have to do a roll call vote of those planning board members who are present since we are remote. We haven't done that in the past, so I'm going to call out planning board members' names and if they could respond with present, then we'll know they're there. Sally Dale.
I am present.
Heather Henin. Okay, the procedure is broken already. Hey Heather, can you hear us? If not, you are on mute? Heather, are you there? I see Heather that you have unmuted, but we're still not hearing you. Oh, somebody in the chat is saying.
There's something wrong with her audio.
Her audio, okay, so. Heather, why don't you try disconnecting and reconnecting and we'll wait for you. And while we are waiting, I just want to let everyone know that we are being recorded on Wind Cam and via Zoom. We also have with us today our recording secretary. Nancy Bocari, we have Beth Rudolph from Engineering. And that's all the people I recognize from the town and, and of course Wind Cam, thank you Wind Cam. And we will try again with Heather. Unless Heather gets her audio working, we are still technically not with the quorum.
For those that just joined, we're just waiting for a few some technical difficulties. We're waiting for a third quorum for it's a problem with their audio, so anyway, a few people just joined, so we'll just wait a few more moments. Please be patient, thanks so much.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
We can.
We can, so Heather, can you pronounce yourself present?
Present.
Excellent, okay, we can now begin. Thank you all for your patience. We are going to very quickly go through some updates. We have a list of meeting minutes from the board that we have to approve. We then have three ZBA petitions that the board will make comments on and pass on our recommendations to the ZBA. There's a bond reduction for tree plantings at the Abbey Road Development. We will be continuing our discussion of the Master Plan Implementation Committee as well. After that, the Planning Boards 2021 bills, priorities and schedules. And at the end, we will go over any actions and then we will hopefully get out of here by 10:00, so we are approximately 10 minutes late, so why don't we compress our updates? Brian, do you have anything to say?
I will say a couple of very quick things. The Aberjonah Initiative for the Conservation Commission. So this is a YouTube video that has been going around from the Conservation Commission that has the Conservation Agent Elaine Vreeland as well as several other Conservation Commission members, talking about the restoration project that they have for the Aberjonah River, river with within the downtown and beyond. For 16 Cambridge Street. This is moving forward with their they're getting ready to file their building permits and they will hopefully, according to them, be breaking ground very, very soon. Meaning within the month, they think. ADA Harvard Street, this is a project that the Planning Board has been interested in for some time along with the with the Historical Commission. And they will, the owners of ADA Harvard Street are coming to the Historical Commission on July 12th, next Monday. To show the plans that they have, which is basically a full restoration of the existing building and then pretty much a copy of that on the other side on the smaller lot. So that's a conversation that everyone is certainly interested in and I'll just stop there in the for updates, just because we're a little late.
Right, and I don't actually have any updates at the moment, so I think we can move directly into meeting minutes. Just to keep this short, if you have a comment that is not substantial on a minute, on one of the minutes and it's just a Scrivener's error or some something like that, you don't have to list it. We can just simply, as we have in the past, say approved with as amended. And then just submit your minor edits to Nancy for the final document, so we are. I believe if we all start back with our first meeting minute is for Monday, April the 26, 2021, and you'll have to excuse me, I have to turn off my video because apparently I don't have enough bandwidth. So it's telling me my internet connection is unstable, so I will go pictureless. Okay, so has everyone had a chance to review meeting minutes for Monday, April 26?
No, were these in this week's packet?
Yeah, I didn't know those were in this packet either.
Are they at the end or something?
These were in the packets from May 25th and we just kept putting off their. So if you, we may have to put them off again if you haven't reviewed them.
Well, I just don't have them open anymore from the other Dropbox link.
Okay.
Oh, I do have, no, you know, I thought we did go through these, yeah. I think, I think we did. Nancy, could you help us out with that? I think that we did review and approve the minutes of this meeting, the 26th of April.
Okay, well now we are confusing me.
Well, the reason why is because I remember wanting to have the minutes reflect something about a mature apple tree and being told it.
Okay, then I am wrong. Okay, so Nancy, could you please clue us in as to which minutes we still need to approve?
And let me, let me pull them up and give me a moment.
But I was losing my mind for a minute there. Nancy, I have four to review. May, May 19, May 25, June 8th, North Main Street and June 8th.
Okay, then I am looking at the wrong. Okay, so.
Sally, Sally's right.
Okay, so I am looking at the wrong document, so can someone please put up the correct document? Oh, this is really embarrassing, my apologies.
Sure, um, I, uh, yeah, I can get it, give me a minute. So we need to start with the May 26th, correct?
May 19th.
May 19th, okay.
And I actually only have one edit to these minutes, otherwise they're approved as, in my mind, they're fine as written, Nancy.
Somebody is using their microphone and really should be muted, please. Thank you.
Just a comedy of errors tonight. My email is now frozen, so we're having a lot of fun. But if if Nancy possibly has them handy or in PDF form right now, not on your email, please speak up.
I believe meeting minutes are cursed recently, always seems to be having problems with them. I think it's because we're doing everything electronically.
Are you waiting for Nancy to put them up on the screen?
Brian, does it have to be PDF?
No, whatever, whatever, whatever you have.
Yeah, okay. That I can find. So, May 19th.
19th.
Yep. Okay, so we started with the interviews and.
Can you hit, so I've made you a co-host, Nancy, can the bottom, can you hit share screen?
Yep, hang on.
And then hit wherever it says, whatever program you're using, if it's Word or otherwise.
Okay.
You see that?
Great.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
You're welcome.
And, yeah, so if you could scroll up, please. And I noticed that Mr. Doherty, you have your hand up, if you could please write what you would like to say in the chat, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, would you like me to tell you what my one simple edit is?
No, I think we just want to scroll through this, just so that we are all cognizant of the minutes and that's all, this is a pretty quick one, I believe.
Can I keep going?
Yes, please, just scroll through, I think just so that the whole document is viewable. I don't know if that's technically required, but I think it at least. Okay, so at this point, I will take a motion to approve as amended with Scrivener's edits by Sally Dale.
The only edit that I would suggest is in the header of the document.
Sally, Sally, we don't, if it's a Scrivener's error, we'll just accept it.
It's not a Scrivener's error, it's, it's an edit, it's a substantive edit. On the header underneath Planning Board.
It's a substantive edit.
On, in the header, on the first page, under Planning Board Meeting Minutes, I would like it to say Joint Meeting with Select Board to Interview Candidates to Fill Planning Board Vacancy. Because this is a joint meet.
Okay. As, is there a motion to approve as amended?
Can I?
Yes, you can, anyone can do it. So moved by Heather Henin, is there a second?
I second it.
Excellent, and Jarius thirds, or no, I don't need to, Jarius calls the votes, excuse me, we have a vote. Roll call vote, please. Sally Dale.
Aye.
Heather Henin.
Aye.
Yeah, Jarius, aye, we have three, zero and two absent.
Yicheng just entered, by the way, she, it was at the tail end of the votes, and the vote, we don't need to redo the vote, we can keep going on to the next one. This is just so know for the next minutes that Yicheng is, is present, so do you have, keep, keep us moving here, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say, Yicheng, can you, can you announce that you are present, please?
Hi, Yicheng Scott is present.
Okay, thank you, let's move on to the next one.
Get the next one up, sorry. All right, I'm, I'm gonna unshare for the moment, how's that, and then I'll get the next setup.
And I think we need to redo the last vote because the, the motion, I mistakenly did not include the date. So I think we need to amend that motion to say to accept the minutes of the May 19th, 2021 Planning Board Meeting as amended by Sally Dale. And I think that we can simply take another vote. So.
I will repeat for Yicheng's benefit, my one edit, which was on the May 19th Planning Board Meeting Minutes to insert a line below the first line of the header to say Joint Meeting with Select Board to Interview Candidates to Fill Planning Board Vacancy.
So while we're waiting for Nancy, we'll just do the full thing. Can I have a someone to move the motion as, as I just described it?
I so moved.
Okay, and then a second, please?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Yicheng Scott.
I abstain, I don't, not, I don't know what's being voted on right now.
Okay.
May 19th meeting.
It doesn't matter, we only need three.
Doesn't matter, yeah, so, so Yicheng abstains, Heather Henin.
Aye.
Sally Dale.
Aye.
And Jarius, aye, so we have three, zero, one abstention this time around. And Nancy, are we, can we get back to you?
Yeah.
Thank you for your patience and your help. So we are now hopefully going to be looking at the May 25th meeting minutes.
And having reviewed them, I have edits and they're not Scrivener errors, they're substantive on page three only.
Okay. Let's just wait for Nancy to pop it up.
There you go, the next one.
Okay, so you would scroll through here, it's.
So this is for May 25th.
May 25th. And are we approaching your edit, Sally?
On page three, where it says Planning Board Discussion on Building Height. The comment by Mr. Zakali, other places in town can be up to 45 feet. I would request that we insert that. And then in same paragraph, the next sentence, the Center Business District Regulations. And then in that same paragraph, the last sentence, the idea is the density should be here because of the relationship to water provided in the open space. Oh, last sentence, I'm sorry, Town Meeting already approved a 58, 59 foot height, not building. They approved a height, not a building for this site, and that is if the open space criteria are met. Those are substantive edits.
Okay.
Nancy, shall I repeat them? I can send them to you too.
I, I, yeah, why don't you send them to Nancy?
I shall do. And then further on that page, under Planning Board Discussion on Units and Parking. I didn't understand in Mr. Zakali's comment, if you're following me, it says also there are no requirements for commercial space. Can you clarify what that means?
So I actually don't think, I think you found a potential mistake. There are, there are requirements for commercial spaces based upon a square footage, but it so I would not say that there are no requirements for, for commercial spaces. I would say that comment is incorrect, so you found a mistake for sure.
Should we take it out or edit it?
I think we should take it out, it's not correct.
Okay, I'm striking my copy and I'll get that to Nancy. And then further in that same discussion where it says Ms. Dale, Looping by Zoning Bylaws Section Number is wrong, it should be 7.3.20.5 Paragraph 1 lowercase a. I'll repeat that, 7.3.20.5 Paragraph 1 lowercase a, I'll send that to Nancy. And that constitutes the extent of my minute, of my edits for those minutes.
Okay. With those, is there a motion to approve the minutes of May 25th, 2021? With the edits as proposed by Sally Dale.
If I'm allowed, I shall so move.
Yes, okay, Sally moves, is there a second?
Second.
Heather, seconds, roll call vote, please, Yicheng Scott.
Scott, aye.
Sally Dale.
Aye.
Heather Henin.
Aye.
And Jarius, aye, we are four, not one, absent. How are we doing on time? We are at 19:56 and we are already over. So why don't we, to get this a little back on track, why don't we do one more meeting minute? And then, how many do we have remaining?
We have two remaining and on the June 8th minutes, I have one question on page two and two edits and, well, one edit.
Well, why don't we do this? I'd like to get us back on tracks, why don't we, if it's okay with the board, can we take up the remaining meeting minutes at our next session? If anyone, yes, okay, everyone, okay, so why don't we do that? Thank you Nancy for coming to our rescue this evening with your screen share. And again, always, as always, appreciate your exactness and your wonderful meeting minutes, so.
Thank you, Nancy.
So why don't we move on to our ZBA petitions? And for those who are not familiar, the, the ZBA petitions are petitions that go to the Winchester Zoning Board of Appeals. And the the purpose of the Planning Board's review on this is to provide the ZBA with the Planning Board's opinions on what's being, on the actual permits. The, the best place for public participation is to actually attend the ZBA's hearing, that is a public hearing, this is not technically a public hearing. So we certainly welcome input from residents, but the main purpose of looking at these petitions here is to get the Planning Board's feel and opinions. So why don't we start with number 3943, Brian, if you could lead us through that one?
Sure, so this is 14 Glenn. The petitioners are seeking a special permit from Section 355 in order to construct an addition that will be located closer to the side property line than permitted as a right. There are properties located in the RDB zoning district and contain, which is the 10,000 square foot district and contains 16,650. Historical Commission Design Review have not met at the time of our, of our meeting. The proposal entails the construction of a one-story addition in the rear yard to accommodate some larger living space and a covered porch with some associated patios and walkways. Due to the location, the proposed one-story addition in the rear, the additional landscaping and that no real additional setback encroachment is occurring as a, or is proposed, I recommended favorable action with regards to this petition.
Okay. Do we have any input from any of the boards, or are some, sorry, any other town staff, for instance, does Engineering have a, have something to report on this? Beth, are you?
Sorry, which was the petition that you were talking about right now?
3943, oh, I've forgotten, is this is Glenn Road?
14 Glenn.
Glenn Road, thank you, so Engineering has reviewed the drainage and we will have some comments for the applicant. Nothing that I think will be a showstopper, so hopefully everything we can work through with the applicant. Nothing that I think will be a showstopper, so hopefully everything we can work through with the applicant or the ZBA makes a decision. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'd like to get the consensus of the board first. If there is a, if we all are going to go one way or the other, then to do things a little more efficiency. Is there someone who thinks who has an issue with the petition?
I don't think I have an issue, but since they made a map showing all their support letters, I thought it was interesting that the owner on the left hadn't written a support letter because that's the one where their property is, the building is like on the property line, I think.
Okay. And if we could, thank you, Brian. So we're talking about. So this property is very close to the neighboring property. There's essentially very little setback, so. Okay. Any other comments from the board?
That would have been my comment, too. I didn't see the letters of support from the other neighbors. Oh, I seen it. I see it now. But yeah, that would be my concern, too, of the what are what are the neighbors thinking on the left side?
Okay. Let's see. Let's see if, do we have, since we are going to reach out and hope and get some input from the neighbors, if that's the board's wish. Then we should, first of all, do we have the proponent online with us this evening?
Hi, I represent the homeowners. This is attorney Molly McDougall.
Okay, thank you. And do we have any neighbors who would be interested in speaking this evening? If you could either say your name or say something in the chat?
I don't think there are any neighbors, but we are the homeowners, Brian and Sarah.
Okay, thank you. So why don't we, I guess the question the board asked is obviously through you, I guess through your representative, Molly McDougall, what, do you have any information on what the neighbor to the left thinks of the project?
So I would respond to that by saying that my clients have been very transparent with their neighbors. The reason that you have the show of support that you do from emails and letters, et cetera, and signatures is because they made sure to share everything with their neighbors. You know, and it full transparency with this board. I don't think that the neighbor to the north is in favor of the petition. But what I will also say is that my clients have bent over backwards in designing this addition to make it as attractive as possible, particularly for that neighbor. So there are definitely some things to keep in mind. First of all, this is a one-story addition. So as you're looking at it, that's not really that easy to tell necessarily, but it is tucked behind what is already existing. So you know, down at the northwesterly corner, which is basically one foot from the property line, it is very close. But as you move further away, the house kind of slants away from the property line. So it's not certainly not as close as at its nearest point. And this is actually looking as it would from the northerly neighbor's vantage point. So again, we have a one-story addition. And it's important, it's cited where it is because it's a kitchen addition. So the kitchen is just going to be extended into a breakfast room. I think it's also important to note that on the ground right now, the closest thing in that area to the neighbors is an open air deck. So if you look at my client's plans, what they're doing is they're actually moving their outdoor recreation and entertaining space closer to the center of the property. So that in and of itself improves the privacy factor because we're moving away those activities and we're actually you know, talking about an enclosure that minimizes intrusion. Hopefully, when you looked at the plans, you also noticed there's quite a bit of buffering between these properties. There's a ton of natural buffering. There's a fence between the two of them. My clients have gone out of their way to plan landscaping that's going to improve that property line. It's actually the legal standard for this type of petition is, is this substantially more detrimental than what currently exists? I would argue it's substantially more beneficial because, you know, as you can see from these pictures, and thank you for posting them. There's that fence that runs right along the property line and you can see the trees. And again, it's important to note, not a single tree, not a single bush, not a single shrub is going to be removed. It's all going to be improved with mature landscaping, full foliage. We, the clients have done everything they possibly could to make it as attractive as possible while minimizing the impact both on their own home and the neighborhood. And something else to keep in mind when you're talking, and I'll and I'll stop then because I know you guys are. It's tucked behind and what that means is it's not going to change the streetscape at all. So you might have the reaction and say, well, why can't they just build off to the side into the center of their lot? And in doing that, you completely change the the look of the house. You also are really going to impact that gambrel roof toward the rear that has the chimney located on it. So for there's a variety of reasons, and I know you're anxious to to move. But I but I will say my clients have really done everything they possibly could to to take this three hundred seventy square foot, one-story addition and make it as minimally impactful as possible.
Okay, thank you. Does the board have any more concerns or is it ready to vote? Or is there a motion, I should say? Is there a motion one way or the other?
Well, I I don't know what to say. I did notice that because it wasn't visible from the front that it was a relatively low impact on the, you know, the appearance of the house from the street. I did not notice that the immediate butter most intensely impacted by this had not signed the letter.
Okay, yes.
So so I mean, that is the point of setbacks is to maintain space between properties.
Brian, could you pop up your setback matrix so we could see whether what they were? Yes, thank you.
I mean, this is grandfathered, but the the proposed addition, while less close than the existing nonconforming is still nonconforming. And so.
It does not change. It does not make it more nonconforming.
The the wording that I saw was that the zoning board of appeals may allow this if it determines that modifications will not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconformance. So that would be a question for us to consider. Is it substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconformance?
So the existing nonconformance would be the bulkhead, right? That is like at the same setback as the existing kitchen or as a proposed kitchen. And but the bulkhead versus a one-story kitchen are two very different structures.
Well, the existing nonconform conformance is a one point one foot.
No, 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 but they're adding on to the back. So there's the bulkhead is five foot from the from the
Right.
But they're they're building the kitchen right there at that.
Right. And I think I hopefully.
Hold on, hold on, excuse me. The board, I'll I'll reach out to you if the board has a question for you. Thank you. So so Ichi, your concern is that they're actually build putting a building on. They're not changing the nonconformity, but they're putting a building there. I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's it's becoming a bigger structure than the bulkhead.
Yeah, the addition is within the setback. So we've moved on from the one point one feet and now we're still within the setback for the addition.
What?
Yeah, because, yes.
The setback, Brian, can you show? I think there's a better picture indicating where the new construction is. Because I don't know or.
But aren't, isn't the setback supposed to be fifteen feet from the property line? But so we're at five. You're we're at five now. The the existing nonconforming structure is a bulkhead. So they're they're using that five-foot line from the property line to build a one-story building.
Well, I totally hear what you're saying, but the.
The whole bulkhead is there, too, in the drawing.
Brian, could you move? Go to the next page. There's a there's a better one which shows where the new.
They're moving the bulkhead.
Yeah.
Yes, but the the new kitchen now is five foot from the property line.
Now, the new kitchen is more than five feet from the property line, I believe.
Five, one and a half, like six, five-foot existing, yeah. So, right, so they're they're nonconforming as a bulkhead. But now they're they're using that nonconforming line as to to use as a kitchen. Right? Instead of five, instead of fifteen feet, they're they're doing five feet from from the from the line.
No, I think the nonconforming is that the whole house is one foot from.
Right. I understand that. Right. But their addition now isn't encroaching on the existing, which is like five foot from the line.
It's not five feet from the line. It's five feet from the back of the existing structure. There's additional property between the edge of our house and the property line. So that five feet is to the back left corner of our house.
Okay, so five feet plus one and so, so six, six point eight, it says, right?
Correct.
Instead of fifteen, which is required.
Right, but but the whole building is 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 one foot off, so.
Yeah, got it.
The the question before is, is this addition? Does it make this nonconforming, the fact that it's already so close, not the fact that it's necessarily one point one, but the fact that it's so close? Does this make that one worse? Obviously, you guys know my opinion. I just explained my opinion that I didn't think it made it that much worse, but the but that that is what that's your record, you know, you can choose to make a recommendation or not, but I, to be fair, I think we should, we should keep moving, unfortunately.
Yeah, I I will simply, I will state that I am in I'm in favor of approving this or whatever the magic language is this week.
I would second that and recommend that the neighbors speak up at the ZBA if they want to.
Yeah, but I can't make that. I can't make that motion according to our current rules, so someone else will have to actually make that motion.
So moved.
Moved for favorable endorse favorable action on ZBA petition number three nine four three. Or what's the number? Oh, that's good enough. So Ichi moves. Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, Sally seconds, roll call vote. Heather Hannon.
I'm going to abstain because I don't know what the neighbor's issue is.
Okay, Ichi Scott.
Aye.
Sally Dale.
Aye.
Jarius, aye. So we have three zero one abstention and one absent. I don't know how we record that. Three zero one one, I guess. Then, thank you very much. And we will, we will. Yes, I think that we we didn't have any conditions on that. Excellent. So let's move on to number three nine four four. If you could introduce that for us, please?
Sure, three nine four four. This is nine York Road.
And we have a an apology or I'm.
Go for it, Dan.
I'll just say Jared Manino Moreno, my apologies, has a bad internet connection, so we will see what we can. If we need to, thank you.
Gotcha. I'm assuming this is Gerard. I'm assuming this is for nine York. So okay, cool. Great. We'll we'll keep. Wonderful. So petitioners are seeking a special permit. So as to be permitted to construct dormers that will be greater than fifty percent of the width of the roof plane. The property is located in the RDB and contains eleven thousand seven hundred and sixty. Again, for all of these petitions, the historical commission and design review have not met at the time of this memo. So the proposal entails the addition of three dormers on the front and one in the rear, all above the second story. So this proposal for the front facade dormers would be about sixty-five percent of the width of the roof plane. The materials are compatible with the house and the neighborhood in general. And all of the examples shown in the packet show kind of more modest dormers above the second floor, except for the one shown in the lower right over the garage. You can see the example, but that's such a dormer, you can see it's kind of out of scale with the rest of that garage and the house. So but I recommended, if anything, reducing the width of that middle dormer by a few feet. And then we could easily recommend favorable action with regards to this petition if that if that change was made. And that's all I have for this petition.
Brian, could you put up, I believe it's the first page of the drawings, which shows the before and after, or actually I think it's after and before. Nope, I think he passed it. Or maybe I'm wrong.
Nope, 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 keep going up, Brian.
Going up. Nope. Smaller page numbers. Even smaller.
I don't, I don't, I don't think so. This is, I think, the first one.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. I am wrong. What is that?
Fine, it looks like this.
All right. I'll just keep going the way I was going.
Yeah, nice. Yeah, that one right there. Do you have the amended version that Suzanne sent out, which shows the?
Yeah, that'll that'll take a second. You'll have to stare at this for a moment.
Yeah, please do so. I think that really shows it in. Why don't we wait on that? And I know ZBA petition number three nine four three people who left us, but I really love the three-dimensional perspectives they showed in different heights and angles, which I thought was quite unique. So while while Brian is bringing that up, does the board want to, I can is there a consensus on the board, how they how they want to work, do with this? Do, I mean.
I would like to put some comments on the table.
Okay. Why don't, why don't, yeah, sure. Why don't we go ahead? Why don't we try to keep ourselves to two minutes apiece, please?
I agree with Brian that it would be great if the center dormer could be made narrower to keep it inside the fifty percent. I understand that the owner has made a wide dormer because they're making this I forget what it's called, switchback staircase to get up to that level. It's a challenge, but we do have a rule that you cannot have fifty percent, more than fifty percent dormers. And then the rule has a reason, which is to limit the looming nature of the third floor. So I would not support this.
I I'd agree with Sally. I think that they're.
Doodle, can you guys all hear me okay?
Yeah, we can, but we're not. We will take input from you after the board has finished deliberating. Thank you.
Processed now, thank you.
Say deliberate, not deliberating, commenting. We're not deliberating, yet we're just commenting.
Fair enough.
I I think that there are architectural ways to make that work so that there there's headroom space to get up to the third floor without needing to increase that dormer. So, you know, you could start earlier. You could you could reduce the the width of the stairwell. There there are ways to to do that besides going through all these boards to get that approval. And if that's the only reason why we need to get go through all these boards for approval is that you can't get the headroom with, I I'd say, you know, I I don't, I don't think that's a good enough reason, I think, to to make an exception like this, especially when it's like just a percentage above fifty. But was it sixty-five, Brian?
Yeah, sixty-five percent.
It was about sixty-five. I do want to make one clarification that it's not that you can't do it. It's that above fifty percent is that you can't do it by right. So so just, but anyway, keep going.
Right. So if that's the reason, if it's it's the headroom thing, I would say redo the interior reconfiguration of the design and you know, get it closer.
Okay. Heather Hannon, did you want to comment?
Yeah, I think the middle one looks too bulky, but it isn't for me necessarily the width on this one. It's that it looks like it's too high also. Instead of like sometimes when you see a wider dormer upstairs, all the windows that are in it are still the same height. And the dormer isn't actually higher than the other dormers, but that center one is reading as as higher. So if it had a row of windows, but it was squat. I might be okay with that. Do you know what I mean? Like if it was the same height as the other ones. I've seen that on historic homes. So that one's too bulk.
Could be a shed dormer and would the would the intersection of the shed roof with the main roof be below the ridge beam?
I'm not exactly sure what you're asking, but it's too high.
Yeah, it's too high and it's too wide.
If you just, I I think that if, so I, my reading is that they're trying to keep the angle of the roof line or the the, I don't. the, I don't know what you call it, yeah, that part, the gable looking thing, that the angle of those three is the same. So if they were to drop the ridge on the middle one down, then the angle would be different and it might look odd.
Oh, is that why you were saying a shed, Sally, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I was saying making a shed, that, that, but I, I mean, I don't think the width i- is, I don't, I think making a shed dormer or making this lower is gonna make it look even fatter. And the sixty-five percent is not fifty percent, and that, the fact that each thing can, can imagine there, as an architect, um, a solution to access to the third floor, I obviously haven't been there, but, all the deliberations, but I think it needs to be explored.
To Dea's point, though, we can allow over fifty, that's not a black and white thing.
Yeah, we can, we can certainly say.
Not a reason to say no.
Yeah, um, Brian, if you could, if you could go to some of the pictures, um, there's one that I thought was illustrative of how another building, uh, these are the photographs, I'm, I apologize, the photographs of, that were given as examples. And I don't know what happened to them. Oh, yes, you have to go back to the main packet.
Well, here they are.
And, uh, if you, maybe the next one, please? No, 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 next, next page. Uh, yeah, I was, I was looking at the one, the upper right one, where what they've done is instead of putting in a central dormer, they put in a peak. And, so I, I don't know if that would solve the person's problem, but that would certainly make the middle section less obvious. So I am, I am currently, my, I am not in favor of this current design, because I think it does, um, it does make the, uh, the third, the second floor, I should say the third floor, look more like an actual third floor. Um, I think that we should, um, at this point, if the board is okay with that, we should open it up to the proponent, so perhaps, um, he can describe what is the problem that they're trying to solve with this large dormer, and is there a way of making it, um, smaller? And so, uh, Gerard Marino, can, is your connection stable enough to respond, please?
Guys, it's not a lot I can do, uh, but I, I can explain the reason, the only reason um, the design involves a larger dormer in the middle is it's the main stairwell to the house.
Could you, could you maybe turn your video down?
Say again?
I had a real hard time understanding you, maybe it's just me?
Say again. I, I can hear you guys, okay, um, so the, the main, the is so large compared to the other two, is because of the pre-existing I'm only dealing with the current stairs that are there, and for attic, and, you know, because they, the stairs wrap around in a circular term for them, but platform stairs, you walk up four or five steps and there's a platform, then you turn, there's another platform.
Winders, I think they're called winder stairs, Heather?
So the, the walls of the, if you want to scroll down to where it's centered on, the, the, the walls of the um, we're trying to accomplish two things, we have to, the bill that six foot eight, when you're standing on one of the stairway, stairway, so you don't hit your head, if we don't raise the height code for safety, to get up the stairs, it's just you, your head, I'm only five foot nine and my head roof line when I get up the stairs, and so we had to raise that up we all wanted to make two, the gables symmetric with the other two, I, I consulted with two architects on it, to come up with the design that neighborhood, and we, I feel that we did that, but again, the, you might, might but it's just impossible because of the stairway that's already there, and it's the main stairway in it. And so, that's the only way is to get the height we need to get up to the attic door that's already there, the stairs are there all the way to the attic, all finished. And that's the width of the walls that are there, so it's actually the exact size of the walls that are currently there, so we can
Well, that was one, that was one question I had, Mr. Marino, was, um, whether the third, the access to the third floor of this existing staircase can be made narrower by code? Um, you know, does it have to be the same wall width?
Yeah, you know, it's, we, we tried, but you would, you'd bump your head on it. Imagine putting a small dormer in the middle of a stairwell, you'd, you'd have a hit your head when you're going up the stairs, so we had to widen it, and I talked to Al Wile about it as well. A little bit at the bottom and how they wind it up, to explain it to him. So that's really the, I mean, that's the only reason the neighborhood of other dormers that were larger like this, and some of them centered dormers that are
I don't see in your photographs that there were other examples of the center dormer being so large, um, um.
Um, are, um, I think I, I, it was one photo that I, I didn't, I don't one picture of, of a house covered by trees, just to be clear, that's actually my house.
Yeah.
He's in front of it for buffering as well, um, so, in fact, if
Yeah.
Front of the house is covered by these two trees.
I mean, sadly, sadly, trees are ephemeral.
Anyway, the, um, but that was, you know, that was the gist of the, the design, again, I, in a perfect world, it would have three symmetric dormers and we, we'd stay within the fifty percent line, but I, we, again, I went, I, I discussed they, they just said there's no way to fit it in with the stairwell as wide as it, it is.
In efforts to make, move it forward, I, I don't see it being, uh, dramatically different from the neighborhood, so I, I would be fine with approving it. Um, but I think that, you know, you could, you could minimize the side dormers a little bit more to get to that point, but I, I don't see the point in, in terms of like how to get, like what we're aiming for, is it just to abide by the fifty percent rule, or is it, is to, you know, we need to move forward, and I
Side, just to be clear, to make the two side dormers smaller, um, they would have to be so small like you'd have to trim off too much on each one, and now you're shrinking the dormer down so much, it just doesn't even look symmetrical. And it just, it had a really bad
Yeah, I, um, to follow up on what you're saying, Eeching, it sounds to me that there are there are legitimate structural reasons why this centered dormer can't be smaller. And so I think I agree with your, um, assessment that this, you know, that, that's one of the reasons we have this process, is to understand why there should, what, what the exceptions are, if there are legitimate reasons. Um, would, would a, a reconfiguration of the mi- windows in the middle help Heather with your concern?
I'm not sure, I guess I'd have to see what it looked like, I don't need to redesign it, I don't have a huge problem with being over fifty percent, though, so with the reasons he's given, I, I don't really need to keep.
Okay, so, um, Eeching, was that a motion you made? I couldn't, I didn't really.
I'll make a motion to, um, recommend favorable action.
Okay, on, uh, ZBA petition number three nine four four.
Yes.
Um, and is there a second?
I'll second.
Um, Heather seconds, roll call, vote, please, um, Sally Dale.
Aye.
Uh, Eeching Scott.
Aye.
Uh, Heather Hannan.
Aye.
And Jerius, aye, four, zero, one absent. Uh, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Marino, I hope the weather treats you well down there as well as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
We are now, uh, approximately twenty-five minutes out from where we should be, but let's see if we can get through number three nine four five quickly, Brian, please.
Uh, this is fifty-three Lawson Road, uh, this is a, a previous petition at this location, was before the ZBA last year, and was approved July thirtieth of twenty twenty, they're seeking a site plan review to construct a new single family dwelling where the total floor area is greater than five thousand square feet, as well as there is a change in slope over six percent of the existing grade. Um, they received site plan approval to demolish the existing house and build a new house over five thousand square feet, um. The planning board withheld, voted to withhold site plan review based on the extensive width of the house and the potential negative effect on a historic resource, that being the streetscape and eleven Leslie Road that was across the street, of which there's a conservation restriction. Um, there are no restrictions on the project site, um, the width of this house was, was the largest issue for the planning board, as well as the design review, however, the historical commission lifted the delay on this property at March twenty-fifth, um, and then, the reason why they're before the board at the moment is that there were further geotechnical investigations of the property and determined, uh, the groundwater elevations that, that the basement would be below the groundwater, uh, the, sorry, the seasonal high groundwater elevation. So I didn't see this proposed changes significantly different from what the previous submission was, and therefore recommended favorable action with regards to this petition, barring, um, anything that was geotechnical and out of, uh, you know, out of the planning department.
That was all I had.
Okay, um, thank you, uh, does engineering have, is engineering still with us?
Yes, I am, thank you, hi. Uh, yeah, so this one, again, we have, we have a few comments that we're gonna relay to the engineer um, that we'll need to work through in terms of the design of the infiltration system. I would note that the applicant has, like, a, has a different engineer currently than they did for the original proposal, um, so one of our questions is gonna be whether they need to go back to the conservation commission if anything's changed there, so, I know this isn't really the appropriate place to do that, but just wanted to raise that as something, um, that we were questioning ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, and, uh, I forgot to mention that Beth Rudolph is our town engineer. Um, so, why don't we open it up to the board, and, um, can we limit ourselves to ninety seconds apiece? Does anyone want to start, um, why don't I just do a roll call, um, Heather Hannan, do you have anything, you were, you were with us for the last time, this came before us, I believe? Um, do you wanna, do you have any comments?
Um, no, I couldn't really remember what we talked about last time, was it just that it was so big? And took up most of the, the front property?
Yes.
It was the width.
Yeah.
The width. And there was some question about the fact that the property across the road had a conservation easement on it, that this, the original house, which is which was okay for demo, was home to a family, I believe, which had created the conservation area. So there was, we, we had a long discussion about that, but I think the primary reason was the width and the fact that it was out of scale with the neighborhood.
Right, and the width is the same?
Correct. But it, it went through ZBA, it went through, it, yeah, it went through ZBA, then they found this new issue that, that is making a slight, uh, making a, a, a change in, in grade more than what was, was proposed. And there, it has triggered site plan review because they're changing the grade more due to this new geotechnical information they received.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna look at the pictures again while people are chatting.
Okay, um, while you're doing that, Eeching, did you, um, have some comments?
Well, I trust that the previous board looked through it, and, you know, I, I do think it's bigger, but, you know, the, the previous board discussed it, and, um, it's huge, but it doesn't seem like that's what we're trying to determine here. Um, and if it's the same as what the boards have approved before, but just higher up, I'd, I'd say that I recommend, um, you know, favorable action. I do think that it's big, and also, I, I don't understand how these new developments, like, forego the door, uh, the shutters, too. Just seems like such a different look, but.
That was, yep, um, well, they can do whatever decides they want, I mean, historically approved it.
Yeah.
Um, Sally, did you want to add something?
So I am pretty much in line with Eeching's comments, um, I wasn't present on the planning board when the previous house was discussed, I think that it's oversized, I think looking at the room plans, that you could have shrunk the rooms, um, by some nominal amount and made a smaller house that was still highly livable. But since the previous planning board approved, or perhaps it wasn't the planning board, maybe it was the zoning board of appeals approved this very large house on this site, and the only question, as Eeching noted, is that it's going up. I would say that the, we have no issue with raising the house to get it out of the water table, so I would vote for favorable action.
Yeah, just one minor, well, I don't know if it's minor, one correction, the previous planning vote voted not to endorse, we voted against this proposal.
Oh, well, I'm glad to hear that, because if we were talking about this, the house itself, the design of the house, I would vote unfavorable action, because I think that it's overly large for the site and the neighborhood. And that, looking at the architectural plans, there's plenty of opportunities to reduce the size of the rooms inside the house reduce the overall size of the house.
Well, well.
A highly livable property.
Uh, Brian, could you clarify, are we voting just on the six percent grade change, or are we voting on something else, are we? I believe we're, we're looking at the entire proposal.
It, um, I, I believe it's for, uh, the actual application is for building a house over five thousand square feet and for the change in, in, in grade.
Right, so.
But the id- the idea is the house has already been approved, it's, it, it, so it's, it's, it's not necessarily technicality, it's, but it isn't how you, you, how you view it, me- meaning that you could view the whole thing. I, I don't know why you would do that, 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 that's why I focused directly right on what, what is the issue here, because the ZBA is, this is substantially the same as what was approved already, there's no indication that they would, but I guess it's possible that there are new members on the ZBA, and they could be looking at it fresh, and maybe they could. Um, I hate to confuse things and make things longer, but, but.
Yes, this board, if it wants to, can continue thinking, can also not endorse this, because of, we are looking at the entire proposal, which includes the house. Uh, I think, yeah, I mean, I think that uh, we would be spitting in the wind in a sense, if, if to misuse someone else's apperism. Um, you would say, I, I personally still think the house is too large, um, we could put it, you know, put our flag down and say that, or we could just say that, you know, it's, it's up to the board which really want to move on this.
I could make a motion.
Sure, I just.
Are you, Ching, are you, are you?
Heather, did you get a chance to look at your, your, what you were looking at, you, you went offline, so you could look at the pictures?
Oh, yeah, it just wasn't loading, I did look at them advanced, I was trying to wonder, turned to remember if this was the one where the there was water in the back, but that was the one with the pool. You know, that really big hardscape slope house?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's, that's Lorena, Lorena.
I was getting confused, I thought maybe it was both houses.
Okay, so, um, is there, um, Sally, you were starting to, to move, I believe.
Well, I mean, I, I, I wanna, I wanna know if Eeching and Heather agree with me that if, it's so, what I'm understanding from Brian and Dea, is that we have an opportunity to comment on the size of the house, as well as its elevation relative to the groundwater, and if so, I vote unfavorable action, because this is a really big house, out of scale with the neighborhood. And, um, there are plenty of opportunities in the architectural plans to reduce the size of the house, as I said, and make it a highly livable, livable home.
Well, you can just go ahead and make the motion and see whether or not you get a second.
Okay, so I would, I would move, um, Brian, help me with language here, I would move to un- to, to vote for unfavorable action on this.
Could me withhold, so this is, um, site plan review in both cases, so you would, you would recommend, uh, withholding, uh, uh, withholding site plan approval.
I would move to withhold site plan approval on this property based on the oversize of the house.
Okay, is there a second?
I feel like I just don't know enough, and I feel like I just don't know enough and I, I, it. Seems like they're, you know, legally able to build this large. And we don't have anything really in place to prevent them from doing it.
Well, site plan review provides.
Plan review, right, so the, 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 like the tone of the, the street and everything.
Right.
I don't, I don't know what the neighbors have said. Um, I don't know the history of this, so. It does seem too big to me, but it seems like we're, we're jumping into the middle of a process.
Well, if, if I might provide some clarity, probably not much, um, the, the response of the neighbors is not necessarily something that we need in order to come to a decision because. Um, the neighbors that are there presently may not be there in ten, fifteen or thirty years, so. This house will probably outlive most of the neighbors, so. In terms of a long-term view, how this sets the tone for development of the next, the rest of the neighborhood is something that. Is within the purview of site plan review. So while you cannot prevent the site, you can, you can put conditions on it. Reasonable conditions can be placed on, on a permit under site plan review. So.
Um, how many square feet is it? I can't seem to find that.
Uh, you'll have to give me a minute. I don't know that offhand.
We just keep saying it's too big, but I couldn't find how many square feet it is.
I don't, I think.
That was a really good question because I, I was looking for that on the drawings and it said.
Well, do we, can we ask, is there some, is there a proponent for this project there who we can ask? Is there a proponent out there in the? Zoom lands?
Yes, this is Sally DeGan, the architect for this project.
Okay, thank you. Could you, could you answer the question of how large the building is?
I could if I could see the application. Brian, could you help me out with the app? Cause it would have been on the application and I don't wanna misstate the number.
Yeah, yeah, I'm almost there. Give me a second, okay. So. This is the application here.
Is that, that, oh.
Yep. No, this is not correct. Sorry. This is here, this is definitely correct, fifty-three Lawson Road. And it looks like this then is, yes, I plan application, so. Where in the application?
Is there, so if we.
Oh, it's sixty-nine, sixty. It's, it's right at the top.
Sixty-nine, sixty-nine, sixty.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, my, the internet on this side of town went down, so I'm looking at this on my phone.
So, yeah, sixty-nine, sixty inclusive of attached garages is the answer. Um, and yeah, it was mainly the width and not so much the square footage for the previous planning board. However, I guess, um, it did. Well, I'll, I'm just gonna stop talking and if there are any questions, um, I'll jump in.
I just know that on Lorena and on Lawson, these houses are getting that big. I mean, they're getting. Beyond six thousand square feet and how, how? I mean, how do we change courses here at planning board? And do we just say it's too big and then, and then just stop it?
We can certainly say that it is out of character.
Well, I would, I would, I would do that, but it's not out of character because all these new developments are this big.
And I, yeah.
It's a moral, I mean, it, it seems like a judgment, just like, just stop, just stop building this big.
Well, you do.
I agree with Eching.
Well, we will, if someone could make a motion to that effect and perhaps pull out the, um. I, I, I don't have my, my um, planning board review process for special permits on me right now. I apologize.
So, so Sally ma- made a motion for withholding site plan review. Based upon the being, the house being still too large.
So, right, so that.
And then, and then there wasn't, and then there, no one seconded that, but I don't, dude, maybe that needs to go back on the floor or?
I think it's still on the floor. All I'd ask is if someone could pull out the, um, the, the chapter or the, the, the section. Underneath site plan review, which is, provides us with the, you know, there's a certain set of, of criteria. And I apologize, I do not have my notebook with me.
Okay, it should, um. You should be seeing it. Here it is, starting with nine, five, seven, number one, minimize unreasonable departure. Is that what everyone's looking at?
I believe that would be the correct one, well.
These are the criteria for site plan approval, right.
Then I would second that. I would second Sally's motion.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is withhold site plan approval based on section nine, five, seven, one. In particular, the scale of buildings in the, in the vicinity. So we have a, uh, moved by Sally, seconded by Eching. Any further discussion? Shall we move directly to a vote? I think we're gonna move to a vote. Uh, roll call vote, please. Uh. Heather Hannan?
Aye.
Sally Dale?
Aye.
Eching Scott?
Aye.
And Jerius, I, four, zero, one, absent. And I think we've essentially just, um, in the same decision as the previous board, so at least we're consistent. So that, thank you, everyone, for, um, bearing with us through the, uh, ZBA petitions. Uh, we're now going to move on to, um, Abbey Road. This is a bond reduction for trees. Brian, if you could. Lead us into it.
Sure. So the petitioner is, uh, asking for bond reduction due to thirteen street trees having lasted one year since the planting. Uh, so in June of twenty twenty. The planning board released all of the money for the trees except for five percent retention to make sure the trees survived until July first. Of this year, twenty twenty-one. Uh, the tree warden, who is also the DPW director, uh, inspected the site. Um, has determined that all thirteen trees are in fantastic shape. And recommends releasing the remaining funds of the fourteen eighty-eight, thereby reducing. Uh, the escrow sum under the tri-party agreement, uh, to sixty-one thousand eighty dollars. The, um, I'm gonna do a new, uh, share as well and there's, um. Uh, also a legal counsel, um, Julian Bar- Burgers here as well, um, in case there are any questions related to this. But the votes that were necessary, um, just gonna get it up here. So, um, like I said, um, the trees have been inspected. We've, uh, we've kept foot the five percent. Um, that which was item number ten. So one, uh, my recommendation is, is for the board to vote to release the security for the full amount of item number ten. Thereby reducing the escrow sum under the tri-party agreement. And then to also vote authorize the chair of the board, Deab Jerius, to execute such certificate of completion. And to take any other actions that are reasonably necessary for in connection therewith. This allows. For any, eh, um, any minor adjustments, um, to the tri-party or otherwise. This is the same vote that we had done on the, uh, previous bond release as well, so this is not actually new language. It's just the same language with this new vote.
Brief interruption, Brian, are you showing something other than the agenda?
Oh, wonderful. I've been talking. That maybe this is a little bit better. Is this a little bit better?
Much better. That looks much better.
Sorry, forgive me. So, um, well, th- this is it. These are, these are the two votes that I recommended. Uh, Julian has, has taken a look at these, um, and she is fine with them. Um, I don't, I'll be honest, I don't know if there are any questions from the petitioner who's also on the call. But, uh, this is where, uh, Julian and I landed, uh, for what we, what we needed out of this evening. If anyone has any questions, I would direct them to Julian, alright?
The, the only thing I wanted to point out and hopefully, uh, Julian can, um, assure me I got this right. Is that they are allowed to get three releases and this is number two of three, and so the next request for a release would be to release the entire rest of the agreement. Julian, if you could let me know if that's correct, I appreciate it.
That is correct, yep.
Thank you. Any other questions? Sally, please.
Brian, could you pull up the, um, the document that I emailed you?
Yeah, give me just a second.
So what I will say while he's doing that is that. The terms of the agreement are that the trees survive one year. And they have indeed done so, so by that bare measure. The, the town by right would release this money. And I would like to have our comments reflect that when trees are planted too deeply, they die. And if you could, could go to my, um, my, I guess it was my email. Oh, let me find it. I did a, I did a sight walk of the property. There's thirteen trees on the property and every single one of them is showing. Various, not every single one. Many of them are showing various degrees of stress. Brian, do you have my, um?
Uh, yeah, hold on a second.
Well, I'm, I'm going to say that this is, we are now wandering into an era, area where.
No, I, I need our, I need our comments to reflect the fact that technically we can release the sixteen hundred dollars. And it is important for the town to note that tree survival more than one year should be a benchmark. And this may not be the time and the place to address that. But there are clear indications that these trees will die in the near future, many of them, not all of them. And, uh, the reasons have to do with the trees were planted too deeply. And in my cover memo that I sent to Brian, I recommended rec- uh, remedies for that, but those are above and beyond the question at hand.
I, I understand. I just wanna point out that, um, I personally cannot. I, I don't have the technical experience to, or, or knowledge to know, to evaluate what you are presenting to the board. And that if there is a concern that there is, that these trees are not correctly planted. This board does not have the technical knowledge to say that they are or they aren't.
That is correct. It would be a question for the permanent street tree committee as these are in fact, street trees.
Is it also, but the, the, it's a question for the town tree warden?
Yes, and I am sorry to say that I'm not agreeing with his assessment of the health of the trees.
Okay.
So I could not, the only email I get, I found from you, Sally, related to this was, was the, um, the, the planting trees. Uh, that was the PDF that, that, that was up. There's no other email related to this other than the master plan, the master plan.
Try to find my, alright, here's my, here's my comments. I'm sorry. Well, um, I thought I sent this to you, Brian. Um, counting, I, I, I detailed specific trees, starting with. Tree number one being the tree farthest uphill on Highland Avenue. I said the trees two, three and eight are not dealing, doing well. There's evidence of distress. Leaves are curling or struggling. There's dieback at its leaders and there's broken branches and dead wood and evidence of dead wood cutback. Um, all thirteen trees are cut, are planted too deep, et cetera. Deab, I appreciate your, your wish to moving forward.
I'm very uncomfortable with this conversation and I will be very blunt.
I, 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 I completely understand that and all I can say is I think that it's important to note that. The town, eh, with consideration for street trees. Should expand its standards to survive more than one year.
This is a, um, I, I believe that this is a subdivision regulation. Am I correct on that, Brian?
Correct.
So it is within this board's purview to extend that beyond one year if it feels it is necessary. I think that that is, we can certainly take that up. We, we will be speaking about priorities in the next, in, in a few moments.
Excellent. Thank you, Deab.
But I, you know, if we are going to present evidence one way or another. On whether these trees are planted correctly, then I think we need to hear from certified arborists.
And that was in my recommendations, my specific recommendations, um. I can get back to it, were, um, that, that, um.
Well, we can, we can, we, if we wanna do that, then that is a discussion for another time.
Correct.
So let us, let us, um, let us move. I think we can. Move to the, to the, um, the hard or the core of this, what's before us, which is a motion. Um, unless there is, uh, uh, does the rest of the board have any, um, issues they want to discuss about this?
Not me.
No.
Okay, so then I would welcome a motion and I'm going to guess that we will probably, I would welcome them. Any sort of emotion. I presume the motion will be as written on the screen. Vote to release security for the full amount of item number ten, fourteen eighty-eight, thereby reducing the escrow sum under the tri-partite agreement to sixty-one oh eighty. And issue a certificate of completion for such work. And vote to authorize the chair of the board to execute such certificate of completion and partial release and to take any other actions that are reasonably necessary in connection therewith. Will someone please say so moved?
So moved.
Okay, Eching moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Heather Hammond, seconds. Roll call vote, please. Um, Eching Scott?
Aye.
Uh, Sally Dale?
Aye.
Uh, Heather Hannan?
Aye.
And Jerius, aye, so we are four dash zero, one, absent and, um. Brian, you, I, and town council will meet offline and discuss the machinations that we need to go through.
Yeah, if anything.
Right, I presumably I have to sign something, so.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, thank you very much. Uh. Thank you, Julian, for, um, bearing with us. I think that's all we need for this evening. Um. And I think that, uh, we. We are now going to move on to the next part of our agenda, which is the master plan implementation committee. Am I correct? And, uh, I think, uh, at this point. Beth Rudolph, town engineer, we, unless you wanna stick around for our fascinating discussion, you can have the rest of the evening off.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks much.
Bye, Beth.
Night.
So, why don't we move on to? Okay, master plan implementation committee. Uh, Brian, did you, could you pop up the revised document that I sent you late today? I just. And then we have, Sally has also a document. And so the, we are, we are, uh, at nine o'clock right now and we had set up, uh, our agenda called for us to. Have about, I believe we were going to have forty-five minutes for the master plan and. Forty-five minutes for goals and priorities. I think that we, um. I don't think we can get both of them done in full, but we do need to talk about some upcoming goals for town, fall town meeting. So I'd like to spend about thirty minutes on this and thirty minutes on. The master, the, uh, planning for this year. And, um, I believe that our discussion last week was, we, we came to an agreement that. We were going to have a, whoops. We were going to have, um, around nine members that we would have the town planner on the committee. And, uh, we would choose the rest based on their expertise. And we would have two people for each of the different core themes. The idea being that, um, with two people, they could play tag team if one of them was unable to do something. And we did not enter, we did not discuss things like terms, styling of terms. How do they get selected and what happens if someone leaves before they're selected? And I know. Sally, your document, you, um, you also addressed some of those issues. You seem to, um, had a different view on how we chose members for the committee. which was to select actual members of boards. Am I, you want to pop that up?
Yes, Brian, yes, you could put that up. And, and Diab, I would like to amend the document that I sent over where um, in the proposed membership section where you scroll down to number four and it says one member of, what I would say is one member appointed by. Because I now remember the discussion from our previous meeting in which we said that we don't necessarily need members of these boards on this committee. We simply need the interests of those boards represented on the, on this committee. Um, and if I can just preface this whole document that I did here, it was a somewhat of a mathematical, if you could scroll up, Brian, it was a mathematical exercise. Um, um, what I, what I did is I went through, I literally counted, I know it's very nerdy. I literally counted the number of times that specific bodies were listed as responsible parties.
I'm sorry, my, my. My connection is really bad, Sally, so I did not hear a single word you said.
I'm so sorry, Diab. I will just, I'll try to be really quick. This was, I did a mathematical analysis of the, of the Jen Goldson document, which is the master plan, action plan. And I looked at all sixty-four strategies that were recommended to be executed. And I looked at how many times each of these entities, boards, departments, and if you scroll down, Brian, um, other entities were listed as responsible parties. And in bold are the numbers that were the highest of them. So scrolling back up, Brian. Um, in all cases, the planning board and the um, uh, select board and down below the planning department were listed in all or almost all. And so I took the highest numbers. And if you scroll back up to the other page, and this was in lieu, Diab, of you talking about expertise, okay? Um, that, like, so here you have the planning board, the select board, and the school committee as sort of the three elected boards of the town. And there are school committee and school board, um, uh, school committee and school department recommend, or strategies to be executed. Then the, the next descending order was design review committee, T-TAC, disability access, historical, and housing. And um, the next one that was not a board or a committee was the chamber of commerce. And so this was simply throwing, as they say, some spaghetti against the wall to see what sticks. Um, but it was a way of responding to the mix of people that would be on the core committee. And Brian, if you scroll up, I suggested that um, the mission of this committee um, is to oversee and ensure the coordinated implementation by March of twenty thirty, which we can edit that, of the sixty-four strategies of the twenty thirty action plan. And they were spread between those four key focus areas. And the work of the committee would be to appoint, convene, and oversee the subcommittees assigned to implement strategies. And then to meet monthly, um, confirm all that stuff and report. Um, and so that was my recommendation. And it was a very mathematical analysis um, based on Jen Goldson's assessment of who the responsible parties would be.
Okay, um, so I, I think this is interesting. Um, I would, I, we seen, there is, you could scroll up. I, I think under, we, we, we don't have COMCOM in um, in a list of.
Right, so scroll down to the very next page, Brian, and I'll show you um, that the conservation commission was cited by Jen Goldson's team, three, as having three accountable parties.
So let us, um, so we're still, I think we're still, um, we're at a, we have a decision to make here. So um, we, we, we still haven't figured out how this board is going to be decided. Uh, how the selection will be done. So um, I, I think we need to, tonight, take us, take a vote on whether, how we're, whether, what will the membership look like? Will it be based on compet- or um, I don't want to call it competency. That's a, that's a, that's the wrong word. Will it be based upon expertise or will it be based upon a, a representative, you know, on each board? And so that, I'd like to, to open up to the other, rest of the board, if you could sort of draw out your opinion as to which way we should go.
Are you asking if the board should be, board members should be on or whether the board members are appointing people? Is that your question?
No, I'm sorry. I wasn't very clear, was I? No, um, I'm, there are two approaches to who is on the board. Uh, last time we talked about choosing people based upon their expertise in each of these core themes. Um, and the, that would be, I would, I imagine that that would go as you would get a bunch of applicants. There would be a selection committee which would review all the applicants and then make the selection that way. The other, um, another model, which is what Sally has presented, is that one, each of those committees or boards would choose one member to sit on this, on the master plan implementation committee, not necessarily one of their own members of their boards, but they would get essentially an assigned seat on this board. And so for instance, the planning board would choose one person, the select board would choose one person, et cetera.
I like that if people apply. I think that's more fair and we might get some new people.
But people would certainly apply to all of the boards. So for instance, um, let's say the Wright Lock Farm Conservancy, they have a board which is, people apply to it and they apply to the individual. Like, if you're the select board member or choice on that board, you have to apply to the select board. So the select board would choose amongst the people who apply to that. So you would still get applications. Um, you might get applications to, you might have to apply to each board. Maybe you apply to the position. And each of these boards would review all of the candidates and choose one of them to present them. I don't know how that would work, but that would be the, you would still have to have applications.
Yes, that, that is right. Um, Heather and Diab, that if, amending my document on the first page that I said that um, instead of one member of, it would be one member appointed by. And to Heather's point, I love the idea of people applying and getting lots of new people engaged in executing a ten-year plan. Um, well, nine-year now, hello. Um, and um, that those, each of those boards would have an opportunity to assess expertise based on the um, specific ones of the sixty-four strategies that that board has um, a role in bringing to reality. And so they would say, this is a great person for this. Um, so I agree with Heather of that, that we would set it up, that the boards would appoint, that the board, the listed boards that were the most frequently listed boards in this mathematical analysis. And I also said that um, um, uh, in my document, that the, that the board, once the board is convened, they can reconstitute the, the, you know, the structure of the board as the master plan implementation strategies are implemented and, and things change. This is a dynamic world.
So, so Eeching, do you have a, I'm, I'm, Heather, I'm sorry. Um, Heather, are, does that answer, does that provide any? Cause that, you didn't have a question, you had a comment. Or did you have a question? I'm sorry.
Uh, my question, I think my comment was just that I thought what you were proposing, what you were saying, Diab, was that the boards either appoint people or we just open it up to the whole world and you can just apply and it's not tied to the boards. Is that?
That, well, um, I, I think that there are some.
Difference, other than the administration of selecting people.
I think there are some subtleties here in terms of um, coordination if you have multiple people. If each of, I, I have, I think there are pros and cons of both approaches. So I can go on for both of them, but that's not, um, I would rather if, why don't we pull Eeching's comments and then I can come back and give some of my own?
Yeah.
Cause I don't want to hog.
Yeah. I, I, I think that I would like to have a wide net so that as many people who would want to can apply for it and then we get a big pool. And to have all these silos of these different committees appointing, I just think that that just gets way more complicated than it needs to be. Um, I would love to see how many volunteers there are to begin with. Um, and then, you know, perhaps the nominating, or the, the um, appointing committee can be composed of different people from the various boards, but we get a big pool to choose from rather than, I don't know, five here and two there and it just doesn't seem to make sense. So I mean, if we're looking for nine people, we pick, you know, and they could, they could apply to the same pool and just maybe like emphasize which part of the four core themes that they most be, you know, capable or want to contribute to. Um, and then, you know, then we could, we could shift it together. I just don't know how to, what we're dealing with. Like, how many people really want to do this? Who, where, where are they coming from? So like, to, to start to be like, the, the each board can pick one, it seems like already like selecting, like deleting a whole bunch of people who might be eligible. Um, and, and then I, I wrote this to you, Diab, earlier, but I, I um, remember from the um, climate action committee, um, climate action plan committee, they, they wanted a student, um, somebody from the high school to be a voting committee, um, a voting member. Because, you know, climate change is so, so integral to, to their future as, as the master plan would be very important to people who are young. So I, I think getting that young voice in would be very important. And I, I didn't mention that before in the last meeting.
Yeah, I think that's, that's an interesting perspective. Um, I, 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 the, well, let me, let me try to, I, I'm, I'm trying to come, reach a consensus on this this evening.
Yeah, can I just respond to what Eeching said? Because I totally agree with her. I'm not wedged to what I wrote and sent out to the board. It was just, like I said, um, seeing what, what, just putting something on the table for us to respond to. And I completely support what both Heather and Eeching are saying about passing a wide net. And it does sound like what I was suggesting was a very cumbersome process. So that said, Diab, carry on.
Well, I think that there are, you know, there are, there are costs and benefits to every approach. And, and I, I kind of, this, what you're suggesting in a way is, is akin to what I'm calling down further, the maximum buy-in scenario. But I think the key is that, um, do we want to have, um, if we, if we go for a, if there's a single application point for everyone, which I think is what we want. You say, here's how you apply for the MPIC or the NPIC. Um, so everyone submits their, their, their um, application. Each of the, each board, if we, I mean, if each board then takes a look at all those applications and say, we want this person. Um, if there's a, my concern would be if multiple boards choose the same person, then we have to go back and do another round. So I think having the selection process be essentially in a single room with everyone present means that we don't have to worry about duplicates. Um, so then the question is, and I have a much smaller list of committees that I fit here. The other option of doing so is to get all of those people, one member for each of the boards in, and create the selection committee there so that each board is represented. And you can discuss the pros and cons of all of the um, applicants. And I think that, that would certainly be more efficient. And it would also mean that a single applicant would not have to appear between, before multiple boards if the different boards wanted to pull them in for an interview. Um, I don't, so there, there are certainly logistic issues. And I think I was wrong. I missed, for instance, Brian, if you could type in school committee in that, right over there in that box right there, and others.
Well, and that was exactly why I did the numerical analysis, because I was thinking that, you know, Jen Goldson, as our consultant, did good thinking about who would be responsible for implementing each of these sixty-four strategies. And I just, I, it said, oh my God, this is so tedious. Let me do it anyway. And I did.
I think that, yeah, I, one of the, so Jen did an awful lot of work and, and, and filling those all out. The one thing that those numbers don't indicate is the priorities that each of those goals and strategies has for the town. And so for instance, let's say in the first three years, the board decides, the committee decides to focus in on a particular set of goals because that's what's hot. And I mean hot in terms of that's what's in front of the town. I mean, one of the things we have to think about, and Brian and I had a, had a discussion this morning with Susan Verdicchio of the select board, is about how does the, um, how does the master plan implementation committee work with the different boards? So I, I am planning on going to each of the boards that we, that are called out and talking with their chair to let them know that we have this ongoing process. We're designing this, this committee. And we want buy-in from all the other boards. So the select board may have their own priorities, right? They may decide that goal X is more important than goal Y, which is different from, so there's this complex interaction. And so I don't know that we can upfront say, we're going to need exactly these people. We don't know who, we need to let this play out a little bit, I think.
Yeah, that's, you're exactly right, Diab. It's getting down to the subcommittee level. So what we're trying to talk about is how can we convene a body of people that will then assign subcommittees to carry the work forward?
Yeah. So I, I think that if, if this board can say, we want to choose people with expertise in these different themes. And that's, I think, what we came up with. And then the question is, what is the most efficient and equitable way of selecting them? And that's the, that's the second, that's the, that's the hard point, is how do we form the selection committee?
Maybe the election committee can be that the, the, um, the boards that I identified as being mentioned in the report as responsible parties?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Certainly, certainly some of them, but the idea.
Yeah, so that's, that's what I, that's what I call the maximum buy-in option here. And Eeching and Heather, do you have any, I mean, I, I don't want to, do you have any uh, thoughts on how this, the selection committee would be made up?
Um, I thought it could just be made up of the boards that are listed. Like one person from each or something.
Okay.
I thought it would be primarily the planning board and then with, with people from some of the keyboards, but not all of them.
That's why I tried to go to the, the list of committees that were.
Right, but I would say like up to three to five.
Yeah.
So, so I have down here, right, you see there's, there's, if you scroll up just a bit, Brian. You see, I have something called less complex. Which, which is essentially narrowing down the number of boards who would be in it. And this is just, I threw some boards in there, included town moderator, because at times the town moderator has also played a role in making selections, and town manager, which is a much smaller group. Um, but I think the key is that if we're going to narrow, if we're going to make it less complex, complex, then we have to prioritize which of the committees and boards that we put on there. But we still need to make sure that the other boards have a voice in some manner.
So, so, so what you're looking for is, is a way of choosing the members of the selection committee? And in fact, the work that I did might not be completely at, um, um, at, you know, a waste. Because if you go back to the document with the.
Not at all.
If you go back to the document where I counted how many times, you could just take the top, if you want to keep it less complex, one, two, three, four, five, six. Um, and so you can look at the ones that have the highest numbers, which is what I did up above. Um, um, and you would say that the ones that had the highest numbers, so you see traffic and transportation, design review, disability access, surprising that these, um, some, I mean, some of them were surprises, that, that we have some really important committees convened in this town. Um, and the expertise is, is self um, fulfilling. I don't know what the word is. That's why they're on board.
So I think, yeah, I, 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 I think that we need an odd number of people. And so I, if, we need seven at least, not five or seven or nine. And I had, no, we're, I think we're going to less complex, Brian, so if we scroll down to the, this, this, yeah, so T-TAC there. Um, maybe take out town moderator. Um, one of the, one of the things I, I also want to look at is that. I would love to see disability access on here, if only because they've been historically marginalized, but they don't pop up as high as design review.
And disability access is definitely one of the ones that came up with a. A high frequency of accountability for realizing goals.
Right.
I was so happy to see that.
And would you say design review would be maybe prioritized over historical commission?
I I would say yes, not because I don't value the work of the historical commission, but because the number of strategies, this is the selection committee. The number of strategies that. Had to do with the mission and of and work of the design review. Was greater than, this is a numerical analysis, not a, not a.
Yeah, I I would say that design review has a bigger picture than historical commission, maybe, and they were some historical commission stuff.
Just for a second here, so with the with the design review committee, that that actually is seven. And I actually think with the way this conversation is going is what. Then just what I, or I think what's how it's coalescing is that. We're not gonna have all of these different boards and committees be actually appointing. I think the way it would work. Correct me if I'm wrong here, but I think the way the way it's working is that the planning board and the select board. Collectively would be appoint would be appointing these positions based upon the normal, you know, you have you cast. It's not catching a wide net. It's it's this, it's the, it's the standard net that we have to, that we had, that we have to cast being part of a public body. So we would, we would ask for resumes. The actual appointing body would be if it's gonna be eight members plus me as an ex officio, so really appointing eight members. It would be four members appointed by the planning board, four members appointed by the select board. With all of these others, the historical commission, housing partnership, design review, disability and T-TAC. Essentially reviewing the applications with these two and they're helping, their 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 point of view is coming through, but the actual. Who's gonna be appointing would be our two boards, the planning board and the select board.
And I would add. But I would add school committee to the less complex model because they have substantial.
Well, then we're gonna have to pull someone. So I I'm actually gonna push back a little, Brian, because. I I are you saying that technically because we are the elected boards? We all, we are the only ones who have the authority to 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 appoint?
No, but but the the idea of each board or committee appointing its own.
No, 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 no. This is, this is, you would have one member from each of these boards on the selection committee.
Gotcha. So, okay, so this whole, so it's not planning boards, so this is the the appointing authority is really.
This is the appointing authority. And I would, so I wanna. I think we need an odd number, and that means that.
One additional for the appointing authority, which would be a member of the Chamber of Commerce.
I am uncomfortable with that.
Okay, I totally defer to you on.
And the reason why I am comfortable with that is because they are not a town entity. And I think that they are, we are, they would be very welcome to. Participate in some of our working groups. But in terms of, this is a representative of the town and it reports to town meetings, so. It's certainly possible that a chamber of commerce person might be on this committee if they are, if they apply, right?
There's also a new. As a really, it's a good name, there's a task force, this economic development task force that has recently started.
That is the next one listed after school committee.
So why don't we, like I said, it sounds good.
I would, I would suggest that we limit this to seven rather than increase it to nine. And my, I think that the. The master plan speaks, even though it may not have the number of goals as as Sally has has tallied. The historical component is extremely important, and we saw that again and again in comments.
Absolutely.
I think that the design review committee. Had their concerns are also concerns of the planning board. So if I had to. Select one to remove, it would be design review committee with the understanding that the planning board. Because we do talk a lot about design. That the planning board would would. Take input from the design review committee.
For appointments. We're we're talking about the appointing committee and I and I totally see what you're saying. I think it's really important to have an odd number. I think it's really important to have historical. And T-TAC, and I agree with you, the disability access has not had the voice at the table that it needs, and so I totally get what you're saying.
But how do, how do, Heather and Yicheng, your thoughts, please?
I I get what you're saying about design review committee and, you know, a lot of the, the, you know, people who apply for planning board were designers. And there are. At least three, three plus designers here in this board, so yeah, I I get, I get what you're saying. I can, I can deal with that.
Okay, Heather.
What was the question?
Any thoughts on this? We we seem to be, we seem to be coalescing around this concept of this less complex committee. Formed of nine, or I'm sorry, of how many do we reform? Seven without design review?
So the question is whether it's okay to get rid of design review?
I just wanna know in general your thoughts about this particular approach.
I think it's fine.
Okay. And are you okay with with removing design review?
From the appointing committee.
From the appointing committee, right, through the selection committee. Okay, so I think, Brian, if you wanted to, you could delete the entire part above which says maximum buy-in. Because I think we're done with that.
Can I add a little complication? I do think that climate action plan is pretty important.
I do too, and I and I was struggling with that because. I don't think that the climate action advisory committee was even cited by Jen Goldson's. Working team as one of the responsible groups, and I felt that that was a significant oversight. As was the sustainability director.
I I think that's in part because that group may not have existed as an official town board at the time that. She was working. There was.
I believe it did.
There was, there was a, prior to the to the town meeting establishing it. There was a working group which led up to it. But I recall being invited to talk to the working group while I was chair, which was at the beginning of. The master plan process. But I I guess.
That's a good point, though, about adding.
I don't know the history. I I think, I I know that Jen would not, would not have ignored that if it were there. So I can only assume that it wasn't, she wouldn't have, she wouldn't have ignored it.
Would it make sense to add the sustainability director with Brian as like the two ex officio?
Or add the sustainability director and the economic development task force, which I saw referenced in Jen's document. But I don't have any awareness of this bubbling up as a thing in our town.
I thought we didn't have a sustainability director yet, do we?
No, I'm sorry, but the, the climate action advisory committee.
But soon we will, is what I'm saying, like what I mean.
The climate action advisory committee does exist, and the newly proposed economic development task force, or at least it's. Referred to in Jen's report, that would make nine is an odd number that would make it a viable vote.
So I I agree those are important. I think the problem we have is that there's a timing issue. If we wait until those two entities come into existence. We are going to delay the beginning of this organization.
Yeah, that's a good point, very good.
I would really like to see this group come into being this fall. And and in one of the comments I put up on top, and and we can discuss the terms. I was thinking mid-September would be when we actually selected people. So I don't. The actual NPIC, can we, we have to figure out what we're calling this. The NPIC, I think the NPIC needs to get working this fall, and it needs to start in September. I know that's a very challenging schedule.
Can we add the climate action committee, whatever they're called now?
It's called the, it's called the climate action advisory committee.
You're gonna have to add another row to that puppy there. Okay, that was weird.
Oh, what's up with that? Oh, it must be the, they're not showing, it's there.
I'll get it.
It's there.
Yeah, we'll just do that. That's cool. That's cool. Oh, yeah, it springs into. Okay, so now we're up to nine.
Good, let's stop.
Let's stop. And I I, you know. This is a big committee. One of my concerns with large committees is how you get everyone to agree on a meeting time. But that's. Let's, let's float this. I mean, one of the things is that I would like to do is to also. Let all the other committees that we're pulling in on this have, let them know that this is what we're discussing before it comes to a formal. Decision by this board, because we're, we can't make decisions for them.
Well, the master plan was created and driven by the planning board. Because master planning is a planning board activity, and so you could make the case. That having done the master plan, we're now proposing the following structure for the committee to appoint members to the implementation committee. And this is a temporary group, this nine people, and once the work is done, they're done.
No, actually, they're not done. Because what happens if, let's scroll, they have to meet every year and do another appointment. Because every year someone is going that we need, no, go the other way, please, Brian. Keep going. So here we get to terms. So two or three years, Sally, you had three years, either is fine. We need to stagger the terms because you don't want the entire committee to drop out every year.
Yes.
You need to reappoint. Someone every fall, if we choose to call as the anniversary date, and we have to deal with the fact that some people. May leave before their term, so this appointment committee is gonna be appointing in perpetuity. Now, it's not a huge ask to get people to come together once a year to do this, but this is. We need to think about how, you know, we do have to think about how we stagger terms. There's a different formula if we do three years versus two years. And then we have to decide what will be done if someone leaves. Do we call the selection committee back? Can we simply say where the planning board and the select board will get together in a joint meeting and appoint someone to fill the rest of the term? And then they would, the whole committee would meet, because I I think people would balk if they felt that. At moments' notice, they would get pulled in in the middle of the summer to do a selection. Certainly, some committees don't meet during the summer. Housing Partnership does not normally meet during the summer.
Well, you have the opportunity to convene a quorum, and a quorum of nine would be what, five, Brian?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, it's a, I mean, that's a discussion as to, I don't know that we have to make that tonight. But certainly, how do you deal with? The non-standard, the non-annual selection is something that.
Well, I, so I totally agree, that's a great idea to have staggered terms and that the terms will be, that the initial terms will be two and one. That's great. That's totally thinking beyond where I went. But I do think that if the idea, the purpose of this implementation committee. Is to oversee the work of the subcommittees to execute the strategies. And all we're trying to do is come up with a group of people that can oversee that work, and it's their job. To appoint subcommittees and keep up to date with their action plans and so on and so on. The 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 appointment committee is what we're talking about right now, and. The, yeah, the appointment committee can be wrote, it can be staggered terms, two and one, for the initial, and then whatever after that, and and.
Wait, wait, I'm sorry, this is, this, these terms are not for the appointment committee. These are for the actual implementation.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you. That's very helpful to clarify.
Yeah, I don't, it doesn't, the the boards choose whoever they want on the implementation committee, and, you know, but. From within our members, but in terms of laying out the structure of the implementation committee. Two years or three years, I I don't know, I I. We're talking about volunteers here. Will they be, if they know they're in for two years, maybe they'll be more willing to join rather than saying three years. I don't know.
I think that's likely. I think that's a good point.
Any ideas from the rest of the board?
Well, three-year terms, I mean, at least you get something done, and you just have three, three-year terms, and you're you're out up to twenty thirty, right? So I, but I understand that the two years would be, you know, less onerous for people.
People could always go, you know, after your two years are up and you still want to do it, you could always reapply. And I would imagine that you would probably, if you've done a good job, you will be reappointed, so. So if people are okay with this term thing, and we just have to figure out what the special selection process is, not in the annual.
So Brian, can you scroll up to the, to the, the identity of this. Selection committee to get the ball rolling? That it would be nine people, and they would be equal representation from each of the following boards in no particular order. Planning, select, historical, housing, T-TAC, disability, economic, school and deep and climate.
Yeah, I mean, the, it would be very helpful to know what the timeframe for the economic development task force is.
It would. Brian, data?
Nope, I don't have that data.
Where did that come from in Jen's, in Jen's report? Because it's listed in the report, and they are listed as having five. Of the sixty-four that there.
So this was something that the town manager has started, but I don't, I don't even know who's. Who's on it. But. If we're not gonna do the chamber, it seems like the next logical group to 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 talk about economic development.
Well, maybe we can just get somebody who the select board could choose as an economic development. Specialist, and that that would make it nine and an odd number.
I all, I forgot, what about council on aging?
So council on aging was listed five times, which is equal to. The number of times that that economic development was listed, so council on aging. By the simple mathematical method that I did would be a reasonable substitute. It's an excellent substitute.
Just wanna do a time check.
Yeah, thank you.
We're a little, little over.
So if we could, if we could freeze this right now, I think we have, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to, if it's okay with the board. Reach out to other, these other boards, I I will, I will not reach out to the economic development task force, because we don't know who that is. But I will reach out to the other people in this matrix and discuss with them. What we're doing and present the. Ideas on the first page of this document up until the selection committee. And everything below that I will not discuss with them because we're still working on it.
Can we see the first page again, Brian?
Thank you. Standing committee of the Winchester town meeting.
I mean, we haven't, we don't have to have that done. It doesn't have to be that.
Yeah, I don't even know what that means. So ex officio, I mean, I, in the little model that I did, there there was quite a few ex officio members based on. The frequency by which different departments.
We do need to keep this to mind. We do need to keep this to mind.
But Exerciceo is not a voting member. We need, we need an odd number of-
Can we, can we add the student member as a voting, this, the ninth?
Well, was the student gonna be on the implementation committee? I thought that's a, not the, so not this selection committee, but I thought the that we opened this, yeah.
Right.
I think that we, we have to, um, so here's my concern with the student. Not that I don't think it's a great idea. I am this is a very broad-based thing. Um, I think that I don't know, I, uh- I think the Climate Action Committee works well with students because in a way, it's much more focused. And it is an advisory committee to a single board, which is the select board. This committee is gonna be an advisory committee to hopefully all boards in town.
And town meeting.
And town meeting. And so there is, um, I don't know how to balance the time and expertise needed in this board with the need to get new engaged voices. I don't know what that balance is.
Yicheng, talk more about, um-
But, but I, I do need to, if we-
Engagement.
Yeah, I, I do, um, someone mentioned time, and um, I just want to note that we do have to make a decision as to whether we're going to do anything for to- fall town meeting extremely soon. And um, I think that why don't we, Brian, if you could tap in, put a number three under members? And yeah, just, just hit return and then do a indent, uh, an outdent.
That's right. Aren't we all such word masters?
Uh.
Click on five and hit outdent.
Forgive me, I don't know how to outdent.
See that on the top of the menu bar, there's a blue arrow that points left?
Uh, go up to the top toolbar.
Yeah.
That's the menu bar. Go, go down.
Right.
You see where it says Georgia?
Yes.
Okay, move to the right. Keep going, 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 keep going.
Up.
Right that way. Outdent.
Thank you.
And so why don't you put in uh youth representative? What do we wanna call them?
It's cool, representative?
Well, I think it's, we don't wanna-
No, I think it's youth.
Yeah, we don't wanna limit them to people who are, you know, a youth representative would be.
But we have a three-year term? We have a three-year term for a youth representative?
If you like get a sophomore or junior.
I think the youth-
One year.
I think the youth representative would be one year. So just put a one year after that. And then we can fill out terms later.
Okay.
Okay, so why don't we freeze this discussion here? And um and let's, and I, I hate to do it, but we do have, Brian, if you could pop up our
Yeah.
the next matrix thingy. And I apologize to everyone, I only had a chance to, 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 to put these down this evening, or else I would have gotten them to you earlier, and I apologize for that. I, I mistakenly decided to take this weekend as a sanity break. So um, what I've done here is I slightly reworded things, so we, the, what I used to call priorities, I think are more properly called deadlines. Um, and the priority is the priority of the board, which we have yet to um decide on. So we talked about four things that we could put up to fall town meeting. If we want to work, move on these, we need to make the decision tonight so that we can start looking at, um, sort of putting language together, cause we need to get these done. Language has to be done by early August. So I, I think the first three are actual zoning changes, and the last one is uh is to just add something to our report at the meeting.
So on, on the North Main Street one, is the idea that we would create overlay districts for the east and the west side of North Main Street?
We're not, we're, we're, the only thing that we would be doing for this fall town meeting is adding that to the report that we are talking about it. We would not be putting any zoning forth until, if we wanna do a North Main Street rezone, that would be next spring. So we have plenty of time to talk. Right, so the, the, the top three, the half-story zoning bylaw definition cleanup, ensuring that CBD setbacks next to residential neighborhoods are not zero, which they are currently as far as I recall. And uh, I think uh Sally, you had brought up a lighting bylaw revision for residential zones.
Wait, that's really interesting. I, I would actually say that there's one really important thing missing here, and if I have to sacrifice one for the other, it would be the lighting bylaw revision, which is that I would like the planning board to revisit and bring to town meeting lower height um, limits for our downtown CBD.
We have, we have three weeks to work on language. I will, I will assure you that this board will not agree on any sort of height, height changes in the CBD in the next three weeks.
Oh, I see. You put it as a B. Okay, it's down there as a B.
It's a B. We're, we're, we're really limited to, the things that we wrote down as As are the only things we're discussing right now.
And it's because we believe that we can get the language together in time.
No, this is because people said that they wanted to do it for this fall. I do not believe, for instance, that a lighting bylaw revision is possible in the next three weeks. Because I don't know what standards we're going to use. We need to get experts to tell us what is actually, how do you write a lighting bylaw which actually works? We don't know what the lumens are. We don't know what heights are. We need to know what sort of, what, what shape of enclosures for lights. There's a, there's a technical background to lighting bylaw, which I do not think we can put together in just a few weeks. So I think the only two, personally, I think the only two things we could look at are half-stories and CBD setbacks. CBD setbacks might be really easy because we just need to look at the CBD and see if it, there are any places where the CBD abuts a residential neighborhood in such a way that there's a zero setback. So that just needs somebody, perhaps engineering Brian, um, we can, we can introduce the new Brian into looking at zoning maps.
Um, yeah, I mean, there's, there's not a lot there, meaning-
Yeah.
We can figure out, we can, if, if, yeah, we can, we can certainly, I, I agree that the first two are possible. And a lighting bylaw, I would, I would say, yeah, for, to, to, we, we would have to hire a consultant anyway, period. So like, there's, that's just not happening in the next-
And then the fourth A is simply a report.
That is correct.
Within height, wi- within, so this, when the report, that's what's usually called Article One. And we just wanna make sure that um, when we share our report, that we talk about those two things, that they're coming.
Although apparently, we are now going to submit it as separate articles, but that's okay. It's Article X. So um, so unless there are any other um la- I won't say last minute, but they're kind of last minute. If, unless someone else wants to see something that we can do in just a few weeks, then I think we can only do the first two. And probably, we only need to do the first one. And then my suggestion would be that um if there is a group of people who are, if there is more than one person who is interested in looking at half-story cleanup, um, I would be willing to work with them to try to come up with um, some drawings and some language.
I'm willing to volunteer for that.
Okay, um, so there are only two of us can do that, so if someone wants to do it with more enthusiasm than me, you please step up, and you can work with Yicheng. Otherwise, I'm more than happy to do it.
And I, I'd be happy to work with Yicheng if you're feeling, as I imagine that you might be, um, spread thin.
I am actually feeling fairly spread thin. Um, and uh, so I would welcome someone else stepping up to do that. I can pass on my ideas of some exercises I thought up with. Um, mainly, taking the existing definition and trying to come up with the most outrageous roof line you can, and meeting with Al Wile, our, our, our zoning enforcement guy, and saying, Al, is this something which would fit this definition? If it doesn't tell us why? Um, I think Al is really good at, you know, bringing reality down to saying, well, this is how, so I would welcome, that would be my only suggestion, would be, and Brian, working with Brian, having a discussion with Al to figure out the difficulties he sees in interpreting of this. And if there are a way of, for instance, using like, instead of using this strange rafter distance, something like um, the amount of livable area, right? Or livable is something which has greater than, I believe it's seven foot height.
Yeah, there's, there's like, there's, there's definitely a measurement.
Yeah, so that, that would be, so I will say, um, to close out, um, why don't Yicheng and Sally, thank you very much for volunteering for that. So we now have an official half-story working group. And you will give us the full story, hopefully. I'm sorry, I couldn't, I, yeah, I apologize, it's-
I know, actually, the thing I heard in a movie was no pun accepted.
Yeah, that's probably better. So um, if you folk, if, so, um, if you have a, if I would, it's, it's, if you could have something to report by our next meeting, doesn't have to be long, but just progress on that, then that would be helpful. Um, again, we try to get the language ready by early August, so we can submit it to town council. And then we can start planning for public hearings in September. And we tend not to have public hearings at the end of August because nobody is gonna be around for that, which is why fall is, is really a horrible time to do, um, summer is horrible for doing zoning, so let's, anyway.
Yep.
Um, we are approaching action item time, I believe. Um, I really would like us to get out at ten, so um, I think the only actions we have from tonight, my action would be to continue reaching out to other boards and, and let and I, I'm really just trying to begin the conversation about the master plan, so that they know that we're in, we are, we are um serious about moving forward with purpose, and that we welcome their contributions. And I think that there has been a, we are working against a um a perception that the planning board is trying to use the master plan to accrue influence and power. I, I don't know that, I, this is a perception, so whether or not I don't believe that's reality, but we do have to work collaboratively. I mean, I think that's-
Really good to hear. I didn't know that was out there, and so that's really helpful for us to know, and-
I, yeah.
It advises us to emphasize collaboration and outreach.
Yeah, I mean, the master plan is supposed to be for the whole town. We just have the legal responsibility for coming up with one. And in a sense, we are the stewards, but we, we do have to work with everyone else. And I think there is, uh, there are certainly, there will be some pushback from people who do believe we are operating outside of our purview. And I think we just have to um be cognizant that we, that, that, we have to be diplomatic. It is, so, anyway, um I have spoken far too much this evening. I apologize. I have taken all the oxygen. But um so there, I think those are the actions. I need some sleep. Uh, I would welcome a, a move to adjourn unless there's something I have forgotten.
So moved.
Okay, second, um, roll call vote, please. Uh, Yicheng Scott?
Hi.
Sally Dale?
Hi.
Heather Hanan?
Hi.
Jeria says aye, five zero adjourn. Thank you very much. Win Cam, thank you. Nancy Polk, our recording secretary. Thank you, Brian, our town manager. Oh, thank you to everyone who joined in this evening, and uh, we hope to see you in two weeks. Bye.